All right, it looks like we're at six o'clock there, folks. Are we ready to roll, Sue?
Yep.
All right, let's do it. Good evening, everyone. All right. This is, let us call to order the city council work session for September 21st, 2020. The meeting is now called, order a roll call, please, Sue.
Councilor Colefield?
Here.
Councilor Yarnell Holloman?
Here.
Councilor Martinez Plancarte?
Here.
Mayor Rogers?
Here.
Counselor Bacon?
Here.
Counselor Finley?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, all present duly noted with the exception of District Five, the seat is vacant at this time.
Thank you. All right, although I have started to notice that campaign signs are going up for various candidates and the local stuff anyway, so election season is upon us. All right, review of the council agenda and meeting this evening, anything you would like to change or have changed for the business session? Hearing none. What about business items this evening? Anything else you'd like to change or look at differently? All right, we're rolling through. All right, I think that brings us to June and July 2020 Fund Financial Statements. Mr. Zook, any comments on these statements?
Nothing in particular. I'm hoping that the content provided was beneficial, tried to give as much relevant detail as possible, so if there's any questions, I can certainly answer those.
I just, I do have a comment. I mean, I think that it shows that the general fund performed better than anticipated by 500,000, or I think that's roughly 20%. So that has to be somewhat good news, I would imagine.
It's good news, yes. Both on the revenue side and the expenditure side. Nice to see people tighten their belts at the end, and a lot of that, some of that is also just delays, you know, in some things, but not a whole lot, so it's good, yeah.
All right, any other comments or questions for Matt, folks?
I had a quick question. Also, thank you for your work pulling this together. Yeah, I can apologize for being relatively new, so these are dumb questions, but let me know. I noticed that it seems as though the, in the report, you said the primary cause of the lower expenditures was due to lower overtime costs, lower fuel and maintenance costs, as well as lower investigation costs, and the delayed renovation for the police at around 111,000, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Perfect. Do you, could you help me break that down? I'm sure it was outlined in the funds, but as I'm reading through, it's hard to see specifically how that ended up breaking down in terms of, you know, how much of the 111 was due to overtime, how much of the 111 was due to fuel and so on and so forth.
Yeah, yeah.
That'd be great.
Sure, sure. If you look at Exhibit C on page five of the packet, it's, there's a little bit more level of detail there. If you look at probably middle of the page, police,
Yep.
there's a breakdown of personnel services, materials services, and capital outlay. And you can see that in column three, the numerical column three, you can see where the total is 111, you can see how it breaks down between that. So 55,000 is generally overtime and associated costs that relate to overtime. Materials and services are, well, let me go down to capital outlay. Capital outlay, that 15,941, that was the savings on the evidence room, not a savings, but a timing issue. And then the rest is materials and services, the 40,000, which would go to the, you know, lower fuel maintenance cost and lower investigation cost, so.
Yeah, that's awesome. Do you know what the, was it like, was there a shift in policy or approach that might have resulted in, you know, approximately $50,000 less in overtime?
No, not necessarily, although, I mean, that'd probably be more of a question for Captain Cosmickey. I know that, you know, COVID may have had an effect on that. I know that, you know, the activity on patrol and traffic has changed, you know, as a result of COVID. So I'm hoping that, as well as, you know, maybe the fuel. But, yeah, so that, in general, the overtime is kind of a, you know, a really high-level guess at the beginning of each budget year anyway, so. And we, you know, one major incident, or, you know, several incidents, like I say, a wildfire could, you know, generate that overtime a lot. So it's not like, it's not that we padded, it's based, you know, pretty much on a historical trend, but it doesn't mean that they're going to spend it automatically too, so.
Sure, sure. Yeah, no, thank you. And to clarify, definitely I was not implying that it was padded at all. If anything, it was, you know, just wanting to know so that we might be able to, you know, continue to encourage either policies or approaches that would, you know, reduce the amount of overtime, because it seems like that was a substantial part of the budget that we're able to keep under what we helped, which is good work. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Matt, folks? All right, hearing none, then it is my great pleasure to introduce School Board President Brandy Penner and Superintendent Joe Morlock. And the stage is yours, folks.
Exciting, thank you.
There you go.
Sue, is it okay if I go ahead and do a screen share for a different set of slides?
Our system isn't set up that way.
Oh, okay.
Generally, it's, you would have asked me to advance what you sent previously?
Okay. Joe, well, we'll just wing it then. That's all right. I've got my spot here. So thank you for having us tonight. I'm Brandy Penner, Chair of the Newburgh School Board of Directors. And thank you for having us, and Dr. Morlock. And I also saw Karina Ruiz on the call as well, and she will be a great resource tonight for our counselors' questions. So we're here to tell you why a bond in 2020 for the Newburgh School District. So this is a question we got a lot, why a bond in 2020? Because a thriving community has excellent schools. The health of a school district directly impacts the growth and development of a community. Large and small employers are looking to attract employees to the area, and without strong schools, Newburgh is a real disadvantage. My family is one example. My husband works in Hillsborough, and when we were looking to relocate, we drew a map, a line 35-mile radius around Hillsborough, and we started researching those communities. And we chose Newburgh for three reasons. There was a thriving, walkable downtown, a well-stocked community library, and the number one school was, the number one reason was the strong schools. We eliminated other towns solely based on their schools. Economic and development will be substantially impacted if we are unable to grow our educational programs and our buildings. Why a bond in 2020? Because COVID has created serious needs for our staff and our students. When we return to school buildings, we know that our students and staff will have much greater needs. This bond package includes remodeling administrative areas of each school to incorporate spaces for health screenings and for isolation if needed. It also includes an expansion of the health facilities at the high school. The Wellness Collective is a great example of a thriving community partnership. This program helps meet the needs of mental health of our students on campus, which we know that those mental health needs will be increasing when they return. Our buildings must reflect the reality of COVID with more space in classrooms to socially distance, more outdoor learning opportunities, better ventilation and filtration systems. And without bond funds, we will be unable to address most of these issues. Why a bond in 2020? Because buildings age. We have, my apologies. Buildings age. We have 10 school buildings, and if we were able to replace one building every 10 years, it would take us all 100 years to replace the current buildings we have. And that doesn't even take into account our district office or our facilities plan. Why a bond in 2020? Because buildings need maintenance. As homeowners and renters, we all understand the small things from painting to replacing roofs, buildings need ongoing maintenance. And our schools not only serve the roughly 4,700 kids and 500 staff, but also our community. These buildings are used year-round as social and community spaces, and they need to meet our community's needs in case of emergencies. This was just illustrated for us last week when our school kitchens were used to prepare meals for firefighters. In our community, school buildings do not stop working when the bell rings and the buses pull out. Why a bond in 2020? Because education is evolving, and the buildings must meet our current needs. We're asking our teachers and our students to think creatively and critically and to collaborate, and their learning spaces have to reflect what we are asking of them. This bond includes funds to expand flexible learning spaces for collaboration and maker spaces. This bond, it also includes funds to enhance our technology, and we know that due to our growing dependence on technology, that those costs are only going to continue to rise. And I, Luke Neff is not on this call, so I can share this. I have three children, and we are currently on our sixth Chromebook. So we know that those costs of technology are going up. Don't judge me, listen, I see those faces. We try to be careful, but my kids are young and they get beat up, and I know that we are not alone in this. So we need more funds for those technology demands. Also included in this bond is an expansion of the Springbrook Building, which houses our Catalyst Program, and a major renovation of the CTE buildings of the high school. And if we want programs like Tiger Manufacturing to grow, if we want to continue building community partnerships with businesses, and if we want to train our kids for the workforce, then they must have the opportunity to learn in buildings that are safe, fully functioning, and meet their needs. So the cost, the cost of the taxpayer, this bond will increase property taxes by 78 cents per 1,000 of assessed value, resulting in a tax rate of $1.52 per 1,000 of assessed value. This is considerably lower than the range in which Newburgh has historically been, which is between $2.70 and $4.08 of assessed, 1,000, per 1,000 assessed value. In my slides, oh, I can advance the slides to you all, yeah, after the meeting. Out of 34 neighboring districts, Newburgh is the 29th in terms of taxation rates. So even with our increase up to $1.52, we will still be considerably lower than any neighboring school district. Sherwood, McMinnville, Bammhill Carlton, Gaston, St. Paul, Sheridan, all have higher taxation rates on their school. So why a bond in 2020 is the question on everyone's minds, and the answer is simple. Because our kids and staff need buildings that directly reflect our value that we place on education and our community's future. Thank you for your time. With that, I will forward it over to Dr. Morlock.
Okay, thank you. If we could advance the slide to the next one, I'm going to go through some information. Some of it will be a repeat, and I'll try to skip through some of those with that Brandy went through. So an important thing to remember really is that we have three main focus areas for this bond, and the one, of course, is to improve, replace, and maintain the community's investment over the long haul for an facilities. Two is to be forward-looking with the improvements and additions in both STEM and CTE for workforce development. And then three, and possibly for me, the most important, are the improvements to our facilities for safety, inclusion, and equity. And so we'll go through some of those, but I wanted you to keep those in mind as we're talking about some of the specific things. So the, and actually, we did a real little recalculation earlier today with looking at the slides, and it's an increase of 71 cents, but the total tax rate is still $1.52, so that was something we just worked on yesterday. That's why we were going to change the slide out. But it's okay, the total amount would be still at $1.52, still keeping us in the lower third of all the area school districts around us. It does also qualify us for the AWESOME grant, not AWESOME, but the AWESOME grant, of five, just over $5 million, additional dollars that come on that. Replacing the aging Dundee Elementary, which has been needed that for a long time. It does both expand and upgrade out of elementary, which has a couple of outbuildings that we use for classrooms. Modulars is the cool word for them, but they're portables. The aging cafeteria, it is our only school on the south side of town, and so it's really important to remember. It also serves our most needed population, and it is the building that's in the worst shape, so that kind of combination is really for us for an equity perspective and also just for a long-term facility perspective. It's not, it's not the right place for our kids to attend. Next slide, please. So this is nothing new. It's been in the hopper quite a while. The district did a long-range facilities plan from January to June of 2018. They do a full review of the buildings. It's a huge amount of community involvement that comes together to look at those, and they delivered the final plan in January of 2019. Next slide. They go through, looking at facility aging, and I'm glad that Brandy mentioned before about the replacement of a school every 10 years. It would take us 100 years to replace them. As an example, our district office, built in 1911, will, which will not be part of this bond, so in 10 years, it will be even older and less safe than it is now. And so you have to look at, over the long haul, that when we look at a bond like this, we know that this is for, not necessarily us right now, but for future generations, and the kinds of things you have to think about are maintaining the public's facilities over a long period of time, and you can improve them for so long. But then after a while, you're throwing good money after bad, as you're making continual investments and trying to keep things up, and so that's why we're looking at a replacement of Dundee Elementary School, a wholesale replacement. It was built in 1952, and the dollars we would put into that would be, just to try to keep it, keep it alive for longer, but at some point, you do need to replace all of your school buildings, and that would happen, you know, sometime in 2079 or 2089, which is far beyond, I believe, where I will be living, so. I'm not sure I've got under 60 years, and we'll see how it goes. Next slide, please. So some of the things that we have are deferred maintenance. They do a calculation, so it's not an exact number. But, you know, things like mechanical systems, kitchen systems, roofing, of course, all those major projects, we keep up on as much as we can. We have a small crew. You know, we can only do so much maintenance on some of those. So there are several of these kinds of repairs that would be taking place in there, you know. Carpet gets old, and we do replace things as we can, but again, we're a relatively small crew, and lots of buildings, we can only do so much. Next slide. We are not building this for expanding enrollment. We have enough space at this time and actually for the future, so if we needed to do a boundary adjustment, we'd still be able to, to house all of our students. So we're not really doing this on an expansion level. That's, I think, very fortunate for us, because we'd be looking at another building. We do have two pieces of property that we would be able to expand to without having to do too much, and even really a third one, if we count the old running property, that would be available to us to expand in the future. But we don't, at this time, need to do that. Next slide. This shows the same thing. This is our middle schools. Next slide. And so as they started to look at some of the, this was from the long-range facility plan in Phase One, they came together with looking at some of the modernization and program improvements. This was done by Mailum, again, in the 2018. And as we know, our costs go up each year that we wait, and I think it's a 6% roll-up cost, and I will ask Karina to correct me later on when we ask questions. But you remember, each year, costs go up, right? And so this original plan from nearly three years ago when they were developing it, this, this is what the cost that they were looking at at that time. Okay, next slide. So we brought together a group called the Bond Development Committee, made up of community members and staff. And it was led by Brick, and Karina, again, is on tonight to help answer questions. We hired Brick to run a process to have a big amount of community involvement, an analysis of the original long-range facility plan, looking at any additions or changes. I will tell you that before we delivered that final plan, there were lots of very vigorous discussions, because people come in with their focus, and this is what I want the most, and you know, it's not too far off to say, sure, we could go out for a billion dollars and still not quite get all the things we want to have done, done. This is the, what we asked them to do was come up with a plan that was something that we could pass, and that's something that was an interim step for the future that could get the most we could done in this time, and so I think they did an outstanding job. The committee had lots and lots of public input and an excellent kind of a process to deliver a final plan. Next slide. And they had guiding principles, so incorporating future service experiences that promote social, emotional learning among students. I myself attended a middle school that was built out of CMU, basically just cement brick with little tiny windows. It really resembled a prison. I'm not sure that that was their intent, but maybe that's just the way it looked in 1963, or maybe it was their intent, I'm not sure, but you know, buildings have changed over time. We know, of course, the importance of natural light, of the importance of fresh air and systems that work like that. Our electricity needs have changed, of course, and all the other health and safety systems that have come along, so lots of things happening. You know, in Oregon, we never really had an idea that we'd have to think about an earthquake. That's kind of new thinking for us as well. And so those kinds of improvements for resilience are the things we're focusing on. We also wanted them to inspire genuine engagement by creating real-world, authentic learning experiences. And I think that that's, that's really reflected in so much of the improvements to all schools, because every school has some improvement built in to work on flexible learning spaces, career and technical ed, starting to develop those. You know, it's often, we wait until high school for kids to discover what they're interested in, which is far too late, right? Middle school, elementary school, how do you foster children's interests at an early age and then, and then help guide them to some of those things? As part of workforce development, your eventual goal is to have people, of course, live, work, and play in Newburgh and finding opportunities to get them that kind of, that kind of training here. And then finally, promoting entrepreneurship by creating student-centered environments. And again, that is about having flexible learning spaces. It's about changing up your environment. So much can be done with furniture, lighting improvements and things like that, so. We gave them some guiding principles. I mean, they actually developed these from a whole list, and then they came together and said, these are the things we think are most important. So they spent some time, a couple of meetings on putting this together. Go ahead and go to the next one. So they tried to keep in mind the portrait of a graduate. They were looking at the difference between full modernization, there it is, at almost, almost 300 million educational program need, and then growth need. Growth need, of course, as I said before, was not part of our calculation, so we're not building for a major amount of growth. One of the questions I get about that is, well, why is Edwards so much more full than it was before? You have to do, remember that it is housing a district-wide program of our dual-language Spanish and English program, and so students are coming from other areas in the district, because it's a district-wide program. So we have additional students there that, that previously we did not have, so. That has gone now through all five, six grades from kindergarten through fifth grade, so we won't be growing much there. There may be some growth, of course, in the community, but people move and shift, and so at this time, we believe we have enough space, and we will build some capacity if this bond passes for Edwards to be able to expand, to have some more students. Next slide. So lots of different exercises. One of my favorites was the tension one, because they, they had to look at, it's interesting when you give people more money, it's actually harder to add projects than it is to cut them. So cutting them is an emotional response about trying to get through and say, we can't do this, we have to do that. But we also had some dollars, we wanted people to say, well, what, what other kinds of things would you do, and how do you prioritize this? And this is actually part of the process from our long-range facility plan, that's for me, one of the most interesting, because it really makes people choose priorities, one thing over another. It doesn't mean that both of them are not important. Watching community members and staff go through a process of trying to determine what's the most important of the important things really, I think, gave us a solid bond package. Next slide. So all told, we came up with a core bond package. We went out in a series of public meetings, had people review them, took their ideas, listened to their feedback. But I believe that because the long-range, and I'm sorry, well, yes, long-ancient plan group, as well as the bond development committee, had done such a thorough job, we really had just a lot of feedback and questions. But looking at the core bond package, they felt that this is where they want, they still wanted to land, so each one of these spoke to people in a different way. We tried to show them that each building does have improvements, that CTE and STEAM is a core part of it, that our equity and our ADA accessibility features as well, so we're more inclusive for all of our students. And then one of the, the passion products that came up through the long-range, I'm sorry, the bond development committee one, was the renovating rooms for the health clinic. We've had some excellent partnerships with Providence, of course, to serve student needs, and that was one that really came up as important for our committee. Next slide. So same thing, you can kind of see the differential. There are some, some things in there. People ask, well, how did you get from, from 116 to 141? When you start to actually cost out buildings, you have to remember, A, you do have, with each year of this, that you put it off, it's an under 6%. And then B, looking at certain things, the maintenance improvements, you know, they listed $61 million, of course, you could always continue to maintain. The committee selected 18, and then we also have a built-in district contingency of 5%. And you have to remember that there are things that sometimes do happen in bond projects, so I have been fortunate to be involved in many bond projects. Each project has a contingency built in, and there's a district contingency for things that are unknown. You know, if you end up with a superfund site as you're digging up the other thing, as you're getting ready, you have to go through and, and fix those, so. There are some contingencies built in, so that we, the projects that we can, that we have listed that we're going to do, that we can do them within the dollars we have, so we're trying to build in that part of the process as well. Next slide. So post-pandemic, we've been talking, of course, about a lot of things. We did, after, in between June and August, we had a couple of meetings. We did some additional polling. We went back to the committee. They still had a unanimous recommendation for the 141. We showed them different options where we could remove parts of the packages, and they came back to, no, we think this is the right one at 141 million. The polling showed that we were very close between that and the next package down, it was smaller, and then had reductions, and so they decided to recommend the $141 million package, and the school board did vote to place that on the ballot in August of 2020. Next slide. And those are hard to read, but you can kind of see how we, the 141 million, 120 million, and 105 million, each one of those packages had different kinds of things that we could do and not do. Again, they chose to stick with 141 million, because they felt that that was the best value and the most critical projects, and that's in your packet, so you can review those later if you have questions. You're, of course, welcome to contact me. Next question, our next slide, sorry. So we've been asked a little bit about COVID-19 benefits, and I know that this is, you know, a current thing, but we have to think also long-term about either future pandemics or other kinds of, of things that, that may impact us, that we may not be ready for, so. Each project, and again, this is in your packets, I'm not going to read through all these, but each, we've gone through and put together, this is done by Brick for us, to talk about the different kinds of costs, and then some of the benefits, just specific to COVID, because we've gotten that question a lot. ROM actually stands for Rough Order of Magnitude, so this is our rough numbers, just so you have an idea of the, the cost, and then the benefits to some of those for COVID. Next question. I'm sorry, next slide. And again, each one of these has ways that impacts our current response to this, but then in the future, being prepared for anything else that comes along, as 2020 has continued to surprise us with many benefits throughout the year. Next slide. And again, this is, this is a little bit older, so this says $1.72, we are at $1.52. But you can kind of see, just by comparison, in the past, the district has been anywhere from about $4.10, $4.10, $10.10 down to a little over $3.00. We are looking at $1.52 total, it's a 71 cent add, or 77 cent add. If you look at the addition, so you can kind of see the little gray line that's down in the middle, that's where the, the former bonds would be falling off. We would be replacing that addition, so that the, the total cost is much lower. I think that was one of the things that our bond development committee wanted to do, is to make sure that they were thinking about affordability, that we're not looking at that larger increase. Again, as you can see, we were over $4.00, but often somewhere between 3.5 and 2.75, so. Our bonds have been far higher in the past, and they decided they wanted to stick at this, at this area that would keep it, to keep the increase to be below $1. So for an average home in the district at about 225,000 of assessed value, the average increase is about $175 for the year. So it's an average increase of about $14.50. So it's an average increase of about 14 bucks, 15 bucks a month. And you have to remember it's assessed value. So people forget that we're not talking about the real market value. What you can sell your house for is totally different than your assessed value, which is based upon, of course, measure five and keeping that tax rate low. So in your tax statement, there's an assessed value and there's a real market value. These are based upon assessed value prices. So I think it's important for people to recall that. Somebody wanted to know the total cost of this average house, 225,000 at $1.52 per thousand is about $28 a month. 28 and a half, 2850 per month for the total amount of the bond. And so that's what folks will be paying if they were doing that. Next slide. Okay, thank you. Again, that and Brandy actually mentioned it earlier where we would be located in the grand scheme of things with other districts for the total cost and we would be down again in the lower third at $1.52 total. So some districts like Gladstone are paying almost 450. Sherwood is up there near $4. Mount Angel at three, St. Paul at three. Dayton at three or 275. So we are looking at being far below many others, lower than Gaston, Beaverton, Tiger, Toaltown, North Marion, Amity. They would all still be above us. Our Amity would be close to us. So it really, I think, has been a very conservative bond process because I think people are very cognizant of of costs for people. But also knowing that at this time, this is the lowest that our costs will be with the highest amount of benefits. Interest rates are exceptionally low at this time. So so selling bonds is is you get more for that dollar. And also keeping it far lower now because if we do it, you know, two years in the future, the cost to everybody go significantly up because it'd be a big change. So that was one of the the questions that's come to us. Why, why now in this time? And we're saying that it is the least expensive it will ever be. Remembering also that all of those costs then go up 6%, 6%, 6%. So they they continue to go up. So this felt like the best time. I think that the committee really wrestled with that for a bit. But after looking at all the information, they felt like this was the best time for us to to propose this bond measure. So I'm going to stop there. I've been talking a lot. And then Brandy and I can take questions. And I believe Karina is also a panelist, so she could also answer questions. And Karina, again, is from Brick, who's been guiding both the district and the bond development committee through this process.
John Brandy, thank you. Thanks so much. Questions, folks?
I have a question. Just out of curiosity, do the maintenance improvements include the high school heating? I know that's been a long running concern. Even me being a parent of a kid, kids that are not even near high school, I've heard lots and lots about wearing your winter coats to high school. So I'm just wondering if that's included.
Yes, you know, it's funny because HVAC is one of those things that always requires maintenance and does require replacement. So one of the issues is that when you have multiple systems that kind of cobbled together, they all sort of don't work and they sort of work in different ways. And so a large part of the maintenance is to do HVAC across the whole system. That's for a couple of reasons. One, for comfort. So safe and dry, you hear that, right? So keeping people in their comfort level. But there are other two other benefits as well. So one of them is we, we weren't able to hold anybody in buildings. They had to shut our buildings down because we have no way to filter the air because of the way the systems are built. We have no filtration. It's the same thing when looking at COVID, they've asked us about that too, like, well, I don't have HEPA filters. I don't have ways to do those things. I don't have easy ways to shut off all of the outside air. And that's a safety concern because, you know, we're not now we're talking about wildfires, we're talking about COVID. But there are other simple things that happen. You know, there are things like chemical spills that happen or a natural gas leak that happens. There may be an accident, we have burning tires and we can't shut those off. So we can, but we have to go to each individual building. It's not the same process. So HVAC is a very specific, very not specific prioritized thing within our maintenance. I think that that's, you know, that and keeping the roofs from leaking are two of the the most critical needs. Because, you know, once you have leaking roof, then you're dealing with dry rot and other kinds of things. So. But yes, HVAC is certainly on that list. And yes, HVAC at the high school as well.
Stephanie, I'm glad you asked that question too, because I use the high school, I mean, first of all, everyone in town. I don't even have kids in high school, right? But everyone in town knows the HVAC system at the high school has some gremlins in it. And I I think that that system is a really great example of a totally outdated system that our facilities team can't even get parts for anymore often. So it's sort of beg, borrow and barter with neighboring districts. I think Larry Hampton said he got ahold of some parts out of Eugene at one point, just to fix even what they could. So it's really not a sustainable approach. The system is needs to be replaced. Yeah.
Other questions, folks?
Are you making comments or just questions?
Yeah, well, let's start with, let's finish up with questions first off, and then we can make comments after that. How's that? So any, any questions? I've got, I've got one or two anyway. The, what's the current rate per thousand?
Our current rate per thousand is at 81 cents.
Okay, all right. So the, so that's a, you know, close to 90% increase roughly, if we we look at it that way.
You can look at it that way. Yeah, except for if you look at, if you look at the other way, you've got, it's actually going the other direction. So our bond, we were at so two, that's the 2018, that's the 2019 one. But in 2018, we were at $3.03 and averaging in those threes. And so it's really half the amount that people were paying two years ago.
Yeah, and I, again, and I'm very thankful that you presented particularly in the days of COVID. You know, particularly where, you know, people being off work, the uncertainty of the economy and all of this kind of thing is, you know, I'm glad to see it. I'm glad to see that you went back and actually sort of sharpened the pencil on what this bond issue contains that is COVID related. But then one thing, and this is a question probably more for you, Joe, and well, Brandy as well. You, the school district has had financial difficulties in the past, in the not too distant past. What confidence should we tell voters about the the financial management at present in the school district?
Well, there are two parts to that. So number one, we of course have nearly all new crew at the district and we've gone through a whole other process of that. And I think that we've gone, I think at one point, actually while I was interviewing for the position, the district was forecasting an ending fund balance of 141,000, 161,000. It was something in the hundreds, low 100,000. And, you know, we're up well over, we're about 8 million also now in reserve. We will spend some dollars, of course, during COVID, but we've made a fairly significant shift. And I think that that's something that has been on the school board's mind. They've been very involved in looking at our financials in a different way. We have a whole different crew way looking at it. I believe that both Nikki Fowler, who's the director of finance and myself are far more conservative in the things that we bring on and have shifted that culture quite a bit to look at those. So financially, we are in an excellent position. We were able to turn that around in two years and then set some new guidelines about the way that we operate and the kinds of things that happen. So I feel confident with that. The other part that people need to realize as well with this kind of a bond, there is actually required by law, a citizen oversight committee. And so that committee actually comes together, reviews the progress of the projects, reviews the financials, making sure that the dollars are spent as they're meant to be spent. I think people sometimes confuse the capital construction bond with hiring more teachers or hiring up some other kind of positions. And that's actually not true at all. So the the citizen oversight committee actually gets to see and go through a process. They have regular meetings. They see what's happening. Here's the progress of this. Here's the cost of steel. Here's where this kind of project has gone. So I think it's really important to remember that there is actually a citizen oversight committee of the whole process of the bond dollar specifically. They're not things that get co-mangled. So we do projects, we have to list them. That's, you know, why you'll see them in the ballot. We're not able to just, oh, we're gonna, we're gonna buy a helicopter for Joe to get from school to school. And that those are the kind of things that that don't go in there. So I think it's important to to remember those two things. One, citizen oversight committee. And two, I think that we've proven in the last couple of years that we know how to do this well. And we're in a far better position than we could have imagined probably two years ago.
Thank you. And the only other thing that caught my mind or caught my eye was there, I think I saw just 2.5 million in sort of technology upgrades. Is that because it's mainly construction? Just given, given COVID and all, you would think that that would be beefed up significantly. And the fact that Brad, you know, Brandy's children destroy technology regularly. So there you go.
Well, actually, those technology upgrades are are more for the kinds of systems that run the stuff that you don't ever get to see. All the systems that run in the background, right? So servers, all the wiring and things that need to be upgraded, wireless stuff. We do some of those now, but we're, you know, we get to use switches and we do the best we can. But some of that technology upgrade is actually about systemic kinds of things. I think it's also low because, again, part of the long range facility plan group and then into the bond development committee is that they were being conservative. Like, you know, sure, I could put millions in all kinds of buckets. But, you know, the hardest part is to say, look, we need to have HVAC before we need to have iPads, for instance. And those are probably a bad thing, but to put opposite each other, but they did have to make really strong choices, or tough choices about them. And I think that that's that's reflected in the numbers that they came forward with. But that's for that technology and there's primarily for systems of that, the stuff that we need to to keep the operation going.
Thank you. Other questions, folks? Or comments, moving on to comments. Here we go. Bryce?
I have a few questions, you know, gotta gotta share the space, can't take up all the question time. Yes. First question is on the the capital improvement matching. That is awesome. I was able to do a little bit of research. And if I understand it correctly, you could match up to eight million. I believe in your presentation is that five, is that correct? Love to hear more about the decision to to have it only match up to five as opposed to the potential eight.
Well, the potential is at eight, but I like to, I like to budget low and then be surprised high. So we're being very conservative in thinking that's about a five million match. If it comes in at six, seven or eight, that's also, that allows us to do more. But you are, you are absolutely correct with the number. Again, I think that we tend to be very conservative on these. Also, the company that we use to do the projections is also very conservative. So Piper Jaffray, they're a conservative group as well. So we may end up in a far better position, but we like to under promise and over deliver on this. And so, yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. But that's why we've, we chose to stick with what in the, at the low end of the range. You know, and it could, we just don't want to tell people it's going to be something huge and it turns out to be not. So.
Sure. No, that makes sense. And in the, you know, what sounds like unlikely event that it's lower than five. Because I believe you and trust you when they say, are you and the company you're working with are conservative in your projections? What would be the plans for making those adjustments, you know, understanding COVID? They may not have the funds anticipated because they've been reallocated, reprioritized. How might you make up for that loss? Should it be one or $2 million?
I'm glad you asked that question as well. Well, those five million are not counted in the 141 million. So those are on top of the 141 million. So we've actually not allocated those dollars at this time. So we would not be making, having to make any significant reductions because those would be on top of. So somebody would say, well, what would you do instead? Like, well, if, let's say we do get them. Back to the HVAC question, there's always plenty of HVAC system to work on. There's always plenty of other kinds of things to do, right? And so it just allows us to do additional maintenance items. It allows us to do some other things. But within our planning, because at the time we were working on this budget, we actually weren't going to qualify for the grant because we were further down the list, right? And then because of timing and certain people dropped off the list, we kind of kept going up. And then we were having these little, I think it's almost time for us to celebrate. And then we got the news that we were going to to qualify just where we were on the list. And so, yeah, we did not plan those dollars into this because of course it's not a guarantee.
That's awesome. And would that potential five or however many millions of dollars also be overseen by the community oversight board?
I believe that's true. Yes.
And just to clarify, sorry, Dr. Morlock, but the funding formula for the awesome grant is actually dictated by the state. So 4 million is the minimum and then they calculate based on your average daily attendance and your assessed value in your community, what that amount is. So that's a fixed amount now as determined by the state of Oregon for for each specific school district.
Awesome. That's awesome. Perfect. And I just created that this next question, I imagine would probably be more so for you in terms of looking at process. I love seeing the the activity with the cards and helping encourage people to to build a budget or to build this bond, which is great. I'm curious in terms of the demographics, in terms of participation in that. Did you track demographics? And if you could specifically speak to what accessibility around language looks like, knowing that historically there are significant portions of an Uber community that haven't had access to some of these processes because of language.
Sure. Yeah, you know, the the goal of any process that we run, especially in in school districts like Newburgh is to try and get as wide a feedback as possible. So there were interpreters available at all of our meetings, community meetings. We specifically, both Joe and I are fluent in Spanish. So we were able to facilitate in Spanish to Latino parents night, for example, answer the questions that they had. And so I don't know the specifics of, you know, all of the groups that we met, but we certainly were intentional in trying to craft opportunities. Because not all communities and not all constituents can attend any type of meeting. And so you have to, quite frankly, go where they are and not just invite them to where you are. And so that was part of our process to ensure that we were getting as diverse an input as possible.
Where the people are. My, my last question, if I understood correctly, the, the most expensive amount in phase one is 34 million apps for the replacement of the Dundee Elementary School. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Which makes sense based off of the the chart you sent us. It was built in 52, right? So like logically, it's the oldest building, therefore it should probably be replaced. It's also only one year older than Ewing Young, right? Imagine some folks would be like, why don't we get replaced? It's only like one year older than us. And so I just would be curious to hear more on that decision making process. So folks were to ask, like, how was this decided as opposed to that? It might be able to give an answer. Or was it really just like each year?
Do you want me to start or do you want to take it?
Yeah, you want to start? I thought we'd go into the modernization score and things like that.
Yeah. So even though the years are similar, the buildings are kind of made of a different bone structure, if you will. And so just the modernization score, so you can see the facility condition index score was significantly or worse at Dundee. But then in addition to that, there was another overlay that was used during the long range facilities plan. And that is what's called educational adequacy or educational suitability, which is a different analysis. So the facilities condition index just takes a look at the quality of the systems. Then you do an analysis for educational suitability to see how well then does the building itself lend itself to the type of educational experiences you want to offer as a district. And so you create a a vision for what you want to create educationally across your district. And then you use that as a lens to then go in and say, okay, at Ewing Young or at Mabel Rush or at the high school, what, how are we doing relative to that? And Dundee also did not do well there either, not to mention its location. So approximate to 99, you know, in terms of where the building is located on the site. So there were a variety of factors that the long range facilities plan and then also the bond development committee looked at. And those are just some of the ones that come top of mind to me.
Wow, that's great. Doing thorough work. My absolute last question, I promise, because that that all makes sense to me. The district office seems to be 40 points worse. I was worried like, are we putting our people at risk? For all the reasons you mentioned, why, you know, Dundee should be replaced because the bone structure. I have to imagine if it's almost twice as bad, I mean, I'm saying red, over the district office built in 1911. How are we making sure our folks are safe in that regard? Knowing that again, it's different, I understand. I just want to make sure we're keeping that in mind.
I'll let you take that one, Joe.
Yeah, thanks. It was actually a project that was on our original list of things that had to get whittled down. And, you know, people went through a process, they understood what we're looking at doing. But when it came down to it, when we had to make choices, they chose to move ahead with other projects, which all made sense, right? This was a really tough thing for us because I do know that the building is not in great shape. You know, for a large event, seismic event. for a large event, seismic event, of course, would take it down. So it, there is some risk there. We may have to look sometime, or the district will have to look sometime in the future for additional space or other kinds of space. But at this time, that just, that was not going to be on our list. And staying with, with that conservative financial number was important because we're trying to, to make something that's affordable for the community. You know, I think frankly, the Edwards modernization expansion is critical. We have kids coming into those buildings all the time. If you've seen the cooler, I think it came off of a World War II warship or something. It's, it's sort of an amazing hacked together space. And it's serving, you know, 560 some kids every day, you know, in, in normal non-COVID days. And so I think that the committee had to make really hard choices. And I think they've, I think they've chosen the right ones. And yes, we are putting some folks at risk. And yes, we'll have to look at some other, other location opportunities if we have that, that chance now. But at this point, we, that was the, that's where we are. So I think it's the right move.
That was the tension exercise.
Yeah, I appreciate the work putting in and the hard decisions. I'll conclude a thing. I would encourage or really look forward to maybe talking with you more, bringing a presentation to the council around what it might look like to be able to create safe spaces. Because to be hearing you say, we are putting people at risk, is unacceptable. Again, this isn't a critique of you. I wouldn't want anybody in our city to have to work in places where they're at risk. Because we know, you know, there are earthquakes. I've been hearing about Pasadena since I moved to Oregon. And if ultimately there's an earthquake that ends up with folks being harmed because we have chosen not to put money into creating safe buildings, that's on us and leadership. And so I would love to work with you more, figure out how we can reduce that risk.
Thank you.
Joe, just one other question. And this is just for my sort of recall. Which, are all the elementary schools Title I?
No. So at this time, we have Edwards, that's a Title I. And then Joanne Austin has some what's called targeted assist. But fully Title I, Edwards is our, our Title I school.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thanks so much. Okay. All right. Other, other comments or questions? Yes, Elise?
Really, I just really want to call out. I mean, I feel like the school district, we have to have something straight in the background. But I feel like this whole district in the last four years that I have been here has made significant strides. I mean, I, and it really, I know it's a team effort, but I just feel so lucky to have Joe. And we started in our roles around the same time when I was in my role at Providence. And it's just been really a pleasure to see the evolution in the last four years around diversity, equity, inclusion, around safety of teachers, around suicidality, and how to approach mental health. I mean, I feel like it's been a really drastic change. And so I am 100% fully supportive of this on and also just really want to recognize the school board for anti-racist resolution that was passed and Brandy for really steering that ship forward. And you have my full support. So coming from Beaverton School District, where we paid a lot more in property tax for schools, I want my kid to be safe. That's for danger after this pandemic and wildfires. So you got my vote every time on a bond.
All right, anyone else?
I just have two quick. One, I sat on the last oversight committee, and it is a very complex, very hands-on thing. Everything is under a microscope the whole time. And two, thank you so much for not moving the second, English is the second language out of Edwards, the dual language program. That was my, that, you were probably there.
Denise, I was like, wow, this lady's really passionate about.
My claws came out. I was like, if you move that, I'm done. So thank you for considering my, 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 can't think of the word I want to, taking care of my people in my district and making sure that their school was not taken away from them. I appreciated it a lot.
Right, other?
It's been a great program.
So I have a question for Joe and Brandy. In the spirit of equity and representation and accessibility, as you're looking at the review committee, what's the process? Or have you put up, like, who's going to be there? Because I think it's really important that with one out of four students being from the Latinx community, that you have some representation, and not just like tokenized representation, but, you know, someone who's really going to be comfortable speaking on behalf of like the community or someone who's well-connected.
So you're absolutely correct. And I think that that's, you know, one of the benefits that we have seen through COVID, actually, is that we've had far more representation in our Latinx parent night, right? So that was, that's, that's been a start. But additionally, we've been hiring specifically people who are bilingual, bicultural. We're trying to actually move that needle a bit more because we want to have more engagement. And it's hard when, you know, you come to your child's school and you don't ever get to see somebody who may understand you from a whole different, a whole different way that, you know, I like an old white guy like me can't understand. And so it will be part of our process of being inclusive. You know, I think it's important to remember, we also have a, a school board member who is sight impaired. And she, we get her the materials the way that she needs them. She asked the question she has, she was on our, our bond development committee. And sometimes I just sat next to her and read some of the stuff that was on the slides if we were going through a process. There are lots of different ways to do that. But I think that you'll find in the folks who are at the district and at the board level, a very true passion for inclusivity, not tokenization, like, oh, we've got the one person. Okay, good, we're all good. But that you actually have to think about your entire presentation, the way that you're presenting things, the way that you're giving things out in a way that makes sense for more people. And that's just, it just requires a little better pre-planning. But, you know, we're looking at all the ways to make our board meetings more accessible with simultaneous interpretation. And how do we do closed captioning? And, you know, there are lots of things that this, I believe that actually COVID has really helped us with in terms of, you know, creating more opportunities for more people to be involved. We've never had this many people ever attend meetings in the past. And I think it's been a great way for people to have a window into the public process. But yeah, the next level of doing that for us is to be including, inclusive of our population. We need to reflect our community. And, you know, it's a, it's a wide range of communities. We need to have people from different areas. And that's really important to us.
I will say too.
Thank you.
Joe, so my thunder on the translation services for the board meetings, because that's something I'm really passionate about. It's okay. I've been to some Latinx parent group meetings, and I don't speak Spanish. And just even in those, you know, really brief experiences, I get a sense of the frustration parents must feel of trying to navigate a system in which they don't speak the language. I just, it's heartbreaking. So that's one thing. Also, our ad hoc equity committee is getting up and running. And we're in the process of deciding what sort of our composition of the committee we want it to be and reaching out to people and figuring out what our recruitment is going to be on that. Because clearly, we need a very diverse set of voices on that committee. And also, I think, just having that lens, you know, the more, the more people of diversity that we get on these committees, that we get coming to meetings, that we start to know and understand a bit better their experiences, it's sort of self-generating, right? It's like the word gets out. And that's where I'm excited about, that we're kind of getting out to that, that point. So.
Looks like Stephanie.
Go ahead, Bryce.
Oh, Stephanie, you're going to say something. No.
She had her hand raised.
I raised my hand a long time ago. I just forgot to put it back down.
I can't see whose hands raised. So you have to give it to me and I might be able.
Gotcha. Um, real quick, because I know we're coming up to seven o'clock here. Around that committee, lovely ideas, I would really push for advocate for an over-representation of our communities of color on, on that board. So as you're thinking about it, it may take more time and intentionality, but I'm all for over-representing historically underrepresented communities. The last part, right, so around the oversight, there's seven million that's being allocated or a total of 13.5 to replace out of date curriculum. That's also something that I think would be a really cool opportunity to lean into individuals that are doing good work around justice and equity within the curriculum, right? So we know that the curriculum is the lifeblood of a school, teachers of course as well, the teachers are teaching from a curriculum. So yeah, would, would love to hear how the committee might be working towards curriculum that is more representative of other communities, as well as like encouraging, right, students to lean into histories that ironically, historically have not been included in the broader narrative. So that we move beyond just the black and brown faces in a textbook to having folks represented in who they're reading about and which forms of knowledge are being validated.
Yeah. Well, and that's actually part of a larger process that we do for curriculum development. The good news is that the state has also changed their requirements in things like social studies. And that we, as part of the school board's anti-racism proclamation, as part of our operational procedures, as we move into now adopting curriculum, it's actually a process of curriculum renewal to say, okay, so what is it that's working? What's not working? What are the things that we're missing? Whose voices are not represented within the text or the materials that we use? And so it's actually, it's a process that it's, it happens to be working out that the timing is coming together, that we're going through some of the other ones to renew them. That's back to a budget question that was asked earlier. You know, if you don't have the budget, the first thing that they stopped doing is updating the curriculum. You know, last year, we put in about a half million, and we, we kept that in this year as a priority as well. Because if you don't do it, then pretty soon your textbooks are all still reading President Reagan in 2020. You know, that kind of thing, we've got to continue. Well, you just have to look and see, if you're not updating things, then the stuff that you have is old and you continue to use it over and over again. And so curriculum renewals are really important and costly thing. It costs time, it costs money. I mean, it costs, you know, materials, things like that. So all of those things are exceptionally important to us. And I think it's a good time for all of that stuff to happen as well.
Good. Good. Make sure it says, Jules Plankarte, the first person of color on Newburgh City Council.
I'll see if I can get the publisher to get that in.
Great. Thank you.
Stephanie? No? Okay. All right. All right. Okay. Well, everybody, thank you. Right. Thank you so much for being on the call. First off, thank you for presenting. Thank you for responding to the questions that are out there. I, you know, greatly appreciate that. But more importantly than all of that, right? More important than all this bond issue and everything else, every day what you do is more important than anything anybody else does. So that's it. You got our children. So no pressure, no pressure, but you got our kids. So, all right. Thank you, guys. Thank you so much. Good luck with the bond issue, right? I think it'll pass in flying colors. So good luck.
Reach out if there's more questions. We're always available.
Yes, please do. We're, we're here all the time. Thank you all.
You will. All right. All right, guys. Thank you. And we'll see you. Counselors, let's, let's see, we got, I got 7:02. Why don't we come back at 7:00, 7:10? Let's go 7:10 and we'll, we'll take a break. So everybody stop your video, mute your, your things, but do not leave. And we'll see you at 7:10. All right, Sue, it looks like we're just about ready.
Yeah. Since you can't see hands raised.
Yeah.
Because you joined as a guest, then I'll, I'll enter a chat.
Okay.
So that you, you can, sorry about that. I didn't realize that.
Oh, yeah. No, no worries. And then I'll actually, I'll remind everybody to wave and throw things at me to get my attention, whatever, do whatever you have to.
Yeah, I just realized that you probably couldn't have seen Stephanie's hand.
No.
If you're finding it a guest.
I will apologize to Stephanie too.
Yeah, that's all right. I saw it, but I assumed you saw it. And then she asked a question.
Sorry about that. All right. I think I see 7:10. So let's call the city council business session for September 21st, 2020 to order a roll call, please, Sue.
Counselor Cofield.
Present.
Counselor Yarnell Holloman. Counselor Martinez Plankarte.
Present.
Mayor Rogers.
Present.
Counselor Bacon.
Here.
Counselor Finley.
Here.
Okay. All Chris, duly noted.
Okay. And folks, as Sue mentioned, I can't see the hand raised features. So my apologies, Stephanie, earlier, I can't see it. So literally just wave me down, throw something, whatever. But now let's move to the pledge of allegiance, please.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right. Moving on to item four of this evening. All right, Jules, are you ready for a proclamation?
Yes.
All right. Here we go.
All righty. So I'll go ahead and start and read it. Proclamación. Por cuanto la herencia hispana, Latinx de los Estados Unidos, se extiende históricamente a lo largo de cinco siglos y ha tenido una influencia constante y vital en el crecimiento y la prosperidad de nuestro país. Y por cuanto la ciudad de Newburgh honra a nuestra población hispana, Latinx, con su rica y diversa herencia cultural y legados históricos. Y por cuanto Newburgh se enorgullece de unirse al na, la nación, para celebrar la rica cultura e historia de herencia hispana, Latinx en Oregon. Ya que nos dedicamos a trabajar juntos para abordar los desafíos que aún enfrenta nuestra población hispana, Latinx. Y por cuanto la herencia hispana, Latinx contribuye a nuestra diversa, enriqueciendo así la vida en cultura, cocina, artes, comunidad empresarial, liderazgo cívico y educación. Ahora, por lo tanto, se proclama por el alcalde y el ayuntamiento, y en el nombre de la ciudad de Newburgh, Oregon, que reconocemos el mes de la herencia hispana, en honor a los hispanos y comunidad Latinx. En testimonio de lo cual, firma lo presente y hago que el sello de la ciudad de Newburgh sea colocado el 21 de septiembre de 2020.
Right. All right. That was, that was great to hear Spanish at our city council meeting. We need more of it. So for those who, who last took Spanish as a sophomore in high school, I will give you the English version. Whereas the Hispanic Latinx heritage of the United States historically extends over five centuries, which has been a consistent and vital influence in our country's growth and prosperity. And whereas Newburgh honors our Hispanic Latinx population with their rich and diverse cultural heritage and historical legacies. And whereas Newburgh is proud to join the nation in celebrating the rich cultural, culture and history of Hispanic Latinx heritage in Oregon, as we dedicate ourselves to working together to address the challenges that still face our Hispanic Latinx population. And whereas Hispanic Latinx heritage contributes to our diversity, thus enriching life in culture, cuisine, the arts, business, community, civic leadership and education. And now therefore, it is proclaimed by the mayor and city council on behalf of the people of the city of Newburgh, Oregon, that we recognize Hispanic Heritage Month in honor of both Hispanic and Latinx communities. In witness whereof, I adherent to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Newburgh to be affixed on this 21st day of September 2020. All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. And that's, that's awesome. So thank you, everybody. Thank you for bringing this subject up, or as we should probably say, gracias, right? Gracias por todos, right? So there we go. All right. Moving along, now that I've lost my agenda, where did it go? Oh, here. All right. City managers report. Dan, that's you.
It is me. I was gonna just jump in, but I figured I'd wait. So this will be published on the website in more detail. So I'll just try and hit some wave tops today. But as you know, there was a fair amount of fire activity for the last week or so, I mean, week and a half throughout the state, throughout the West. And we were not spared, although I guess the city limits were, but certainly in proximity, we were not spared. We had the Shalhoun Mountain Bald Creek Fire, the TB FNR was on, actually started during our council meeting on Tuesday, the 8th, and went through the 15th of September. And so I want to thank the TB FNR firefighters for the work that they, they did on that. We had about 75 folks working that fire. It was a huge effort. And, you know, just thank you so much for the community. Just a quick summation, there's a lot of information on our website. We did try to keep that maintained as we got a flow of information and on our social media. So we had people who were working on providing that information throughout the night, throughout the weekend, I think, that we had, you know, all of those things. throughout the, the weekend, I think that we had, you know, all of those things, just to try to keep a level of information in, in people's hands. And I know we used our, our emergency alert system as well to try to provide some of the warnings when it came to evacuations and things like that. But we did have 875 acres just outside town that did burn. Fire perimeter and fire area, it was about 100, or I'm sorry, 1,555 acres. Again, 75 firefighters on, on hand and, you know, had a lot of wind, as you all know. And so some of the fire kind of leaping from tree to tree and from, you know, kind of burn area to burn area rather than necessarily, it's just kind of sweeping across a huge swath. And we did have evacuations in the area, level three, which is that go immediately. And so again, we tried to play a role in communicating with folks ahead of that. And I know a lot of folks in the, in the area had wildlife, or sorry, not wildlife, animals, but not wildlife, animals that they had to take care of. And, and certainly that's a, a hard thing when you're trying to get your animals and your family taken care of. So I know that this is really disruptive. Pretty much beginning the eighth, I think it was, maybe it was the ninth, we had some amazing air quality. We were the worst air quality in the world, it sounded like for a while there in the Portland metro area. And we, or I learned a new tool, which has been posted on our website as well, that airnow.gov, which is the EPA link for air quality. And as you probably know, we had air quality, it was in very unhealthy to hazardous range. The hazardous being 301 to 500 plus particulates. So this PM 2.5, the sort of very fine particulates that the air was being measured based on the fire activity, the winds, the weather pattern. It just sat on us for about a week, almost 10 days and was disgusting. And so had a big influence on the activity of the city and our city crews. We certainly tried to pull back on some of the outdoor activity for our staff, for their own health. And certainly we're trying to do what we could, community wide as well. One of the things that will be published is a lovely picture of a box fan converted to an air purifier. You know, I'm not sure how many other people did that. I certainly did, you know, strap an air filter on, on a box fan. And, and we did that in the library to combat the air conditions, but we still had some, some issues with air quality in the facility, you know, just with people coming in and out. We did see lower than normal activity, as you would imagine from that during the period in September when we had the fires. But overall, I think numbers that we'll publish really kind of pattern what has been consistent, I think for us, is we're getting a fair amount of circulation events and especially e-circulation events. We're actually seeing a higher rate than in this past August as compared to August of 2019. That's the, the most recent comparable data we had. But so we're seeing more, almost 1,000 more e-circulation events, 4,700 in, in this 2020 to 3,900 e-events in 2019. So I think people are still using the library services, but they're doing it remotely. And fewer people are, are coming onsite. One thing I did want to highlight, which is on our website for the library, the library board is going through a strategic goal setting process, 2020 to 2025, and has a survey available and would really love community members to take, to take the survey, participate in the planning for the library's future. Again, that is on, posted on our website and there's a URL there to click on the survey. For finance, you're gonna hear a little bit from Matt in a little bit, but he's also been working on some potential budget tweaking and not the actual, the numbers, but the process. He and I have been talking about program-based budgeting and trying to, to look at some of the way that we budget and a way to address some of the transparency that, in my experience, and perhaps given that the council at least is part of the budget committee, you all see the budget being built and have an influence over that. It can be municipal budgeting can be a little bit black box, a little bit confusing. And we're trying to, to look at ways to incorporate more information, incorporate clarity as to the activities that we're doing in the city and what they cost. So looking into that right now and, and try to, to bring that forward in this next budget cycle. Kind of a big endeavor. It's a bit of a paradigm shift. And so I appreciate Matt taking that on and, and we're, we'll bring that forward, I think, to council before we actually pull the trigger on it. But just hopefully something we can do to, to add some transparency to, to the budgeting process. In Public Works, we, as I've mentioned, well, I guess, didn't mention the windstorm. So we had the fires, but we, prior to the fires, we had the day before or two days before, what kicked off the fires, this whole fire activity cycle was the winds, extremely high winds that we had in the community, in the area. They were in the process in Public Works of picking up all the, the stuff, all the downed limbs and trees and power lines and all kinds of other things. We had power outages that I think I mentioned in the meeting on the eighth. But again, there's a summation that will provide in writing of all of the, the various outages and, and things like that. And as I did mention before, we had brought in our staff that are normally out in the field in Public Works, tried to restrict necessary outside activity and did make sure that they were all using N95 masks, which is the recommended filled, air filter, air mask. So I think we did a good job there in terms of trying to provide some level of safety. One other thing we did for safety, for some of our city staff who were evacuated from other areas, was allow them on a, that emergency basis, tried to take some of the stress and, and the, you know, the impact, I guess, of being evacuated in those level three areas. We had some staff who were in Malala and, and other areas that were much more hard hit than the Newburgh area, which I guess we should be thankful that we weren't as hard hit, but had to accommodate some of those staff. And so we had their campers, motorhomes, et cetera, for a couple of days on some of our facility sites. Allowed them to use those yards just so they could figure out their next step. Thankfully, no one in our immediate coworker family lost any homes, but certainly were evacuated for a period of a few days. And so just really trying to provide some support when they needed it and it seemed to work pretty well. One that note from Public Works as well, I, I didn't mention it before and I should have, but now that we have even more to celebrate, I want to celebrate Andrew Shepherd, who's an operator three regulatory specialist, and he works in our wastewater treatment plant. Last month, he was selected by the Pacific Northwest Clean Water Association as the water treatment operator of the year for the Lower Columbia section. And then on Tuesday, the 15th of September, they announced, the association announced he was selected as the wastewater operator of the year for the state of Oregon. So super proud to have somebody who's winning awards like that on our staff. And I want to make sure we recognize the work that he's done. And I think, as he put it well, the work that the whole team is doing, because it obviously does take a village and all the stuff that we're doing in, in our various facilities, providing water and wastewater is not an individual sport. So appreciate the fact that he recognized that and, and kind of accepting his award and everything, but, but also just wanted to give him kudos individually. Quick community engagement updates. So again, it's been a busy emergency week or two. And so that was a, a big focus for Lacy and, and a couple others. And appreciate those people who stepped up to help her with web updates and communication. But in addition to that, we did have RFP earlier in the year. And in August, we let an RFP for communications planning and strategic communications. We have contracted with Slate Communications to create that strategic communication plan. So that will start with an audit phase and they'll have some council interaction with that. They'll also audit the various departments and, and talk to department heads. The goal there is really to improve the way we communicate, the, the methods and tools, but also the tactics and, and some of the timing, create more of a plan and really be more focused in how we do our communication to, to the public, with the public, and really focus on public engagement rather than just promoting, just information as it comes. So being again, more strategic. We're also in the process of that, creating a communications plan creation committee. And then we'll have an ongoing steering committee after that. And so working on developing that plan. We've talked about it for a while. I want to make sure that we tout the fact that C Click Fix, the app, is finally, I think, ready to be launched. And we're gonna launch it officially on Wednesday, the 23rd. Marketing and all of that fun will come out, but it's downloadable for smartphones. And the beauty of this again, is that you can use your phone, take a picture of an issue that you would like resolved. And then it will geolocate that picture and you can then categorize what it, the issue is and send it. It will then be forwarded on to the appropriate department for resolution. And you will then, as the person submitting that, be able to track progress in the resolution of that issue. So Public Works, police, code compliance are gonna be working on that and they'll receive those real-time reports. And then again, we'll be able to track and follow up. And so more information will come out on that shortly. But those folks who want to get on it now, I, I think the app should be available already and the, the downloadable in the, the, the app downloading places on, for your smartphone. And, and go grab that now and, and start sending us information. It'll help us tracking when we know the types of issues, the location of the issue. And we'll have some data there in terms of how our follow-up is and all of that, which will help us in improving. Just a few updates from the police department related to the fire again. But they, during the period of the fire, the dispatch center received a 390% jump in call volume, which is not that surprising, given the high winds and then fire activity and, and a level of concern that people had related to the downed trees and, and power lines and things like that. Call volume after that leveled off to about 200% of normal for the last, for the next few days as they helped coordinate with other, with the emergency responders and, and other folks and, and kind of help pick up some slack in some areas. Again, want to mention Code Red. It's something that a lot of organizations, a lot of communities have. This is how we, our dispatch center provides information to the public when there is a need to evacuate. So want to encourage people to sign up for that. It's easy and you will get those text notifications. And actually you can sign up, I think, for a phone call, for email, text, all kinds of things. And so when there is an emergency event like this, you will get information readily. And as we have it, we'll use Code Red and update. So a plug for emergency preparedness and for communication on that. September 12th is National Police Women's Day. And just wanted to recognize Officer Heather Foltz and have a lovely picture of Heather that will be in the printed materials on our website. Heather is a Newburgh native and, and has been on the, the police force for 17 years. Is a leader in the Newburgh Dundee Police Department. And just want to recognize her and her contributions to protecting the community. In community development, just real quickly, we're working on implementation of the Riverfront Master Plan and, and all of those various things. So some postcards were mailed out recently with a link for information gathering purposes and for information sharing. And so we're trying to make sure we can communicate directly with residents in that area. And we're going to continue also working on urban renewal. And our next phase of that is staff working with the consultants to bring forward a work program. IT had some interesting activities during the, the fire time in particular. There were outages for a lot of our systems. And I think we were actually, that was unfortunately going around in the area. There were fiber cuts happening around us that were unfortunate, but caused by some of the line crews cutting fire lines. And so we actually had a few fiber cuts that would sort of cause intermittent outages. And, and had some, some outage related drops for service for Comcast. And then we're essentially trying to work with our FirstNet for phone outages as well. We had diminished cellphone capacity for a couple of days there as well. So learning as we go, trying to figure out how to, how to get through those things in an emergency. And then I think we had mentioned before, the, one of the CARES Act, the COVID-related funding sources that we were able to access. We had ordered some laptops and things like that for staff to be able to better telework and, and maintain our continuity of operations. And so we've gotten some of them already. We're, we've ordered 58 laptops and eight iPads. The iPads are from Public Works in order to have the staff there in the field work more effectively. And some of the laptops are for staff that are teleworking from home. But we're in the process in IT of configuring those and getting those both ordered and then in the field and, and in people's hands. And hopefully that'll help to manage some of the ongoing impacts on, on our help desk with teleworking. And then real quickly, economic health. We have been working in, with economic health in, in a few areas related to COVID. Gift card promotion idea and trying to figure out how to support local businesses. Having winter-ready business space. And then Newburgh-centered childcare center, trying to get something like that stood up as well. And so working collaboratively with businesses in the community and, and elected officials at the state and federal level as well. And I think that's pretty much it.
Folks, questions for Dan? All right. Hearing none. We are on to the portion of the agenda where we're, I'm sorry.
You got one wave. Sorry. I usually try to wait one or two beats to give space for other people to ask questions. Told you y'all would regret appointing me because I'm taking a poll for the questions. Questions. First mentioned firefighters. I know that in California where I came from, there's a pretty significant practice of using folks who are incarcerated to fight fires. Do you know if that's a common practice here? And when we, like most specifically recently with the fires, if there were any incarcerated inmates that were used to fight fires?
I don't know the population of the firefighters that were used by TB FNR, but my understanding is that they do in Oregon. I'm familiar with California as well, where they, they have folks pulled out of the jails. My understanding is that there's a limited supply of those individuals across the west because of COVID. So I'm not sure that that would, would have been used here, but I don't know for sure. I didn't get much more detail than the 75 number.
Sure, 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 sure. And obviously probably not for tonight, but in the future, it would probably be good to, to have a, a conversation about that. Just, yeah, I think, you know, again, if equity and justice are going to be part of the goals of the city council, I think that's something at least we're having a conversation with and realizing, no, that's not necessarily your area of expertise. So if we could have maybe somebody from TB FNR, like help us understand what that process looks like to a degree, to reason mates, why, how, and, you know, might there be more just systems? Would, would be an initial question that I have.
I don't, I don't think TB FNR would actually use inmates. I think it would be a state level firefighting issue. You know, I mean, that's what happens in California. And so it's not necessarily, you know, the local district that would have that, have access to them. It would be supplemented from the state or from a different resource. So I, I can follow up and try and get more information about it, but it wouldn't probably be TB FNR.
Okay. No, that, that's helpful. And I think I'd also wonder like, what is that, that process meaning? Like, at what point is there a call made that our current capacities to fight this fire are, are not high enough? And therefore we need to then solicit the state for assistance using this particular type of labor? That, that would be really, I think, interesting to, to talk more about. And if that's the case, what we might, is the city do to help increase capacities? Then we don't necessarily have to lean into these other forms of labor, if that makes sense.
So I, I know enough to be dangerous and, and in response to that, I, I know enough to be dangerous that when you have a situation where local resources are exhausted, emergency manager typically makes a call for an additional, they level up to like, level three would be kind of our local resources. Level two would be up to a more of a state team and level one would be a federal. And so it would be a question of available resources. It wouldn't necessarily go immediately into the type of resource, if that makes sense. It would be kind of the- It would be kind of the, you know, who's available where. And, you know, you don't typically get too picky at that point, because the level two, you know, it's a huge, you know, it's bigger than they can handle, kind of an incident at the local level, you know? And so it's what's available nearby. And in this case, seeing how much activity there was across the region, I think they were pretty well tapped out on firefighters, from what I saw in watching this. So I'm not sure that they had available, let alone available inmate support or anyone else.
Okay, okay, that's good. And I can talk with you more offline about that.
Yep.
Maybe I just have to become a US Senator. Anyway, next, in terms of calls, you mentioned 200% increase. Do we track the nature of the calls? I mean, I think logic would say that increases because of trees being down, things of that nature related to both the windstorm and the fires. But do we track the nature of the calls as they come in?
Yeah, I believe they do. I'm not sure how granular the information is. But dispatch, you know, is part of the national standards and that sort of thing. They do, and then they do quality assurance on calls and those kinds of things as well. So I can, I could probably look into that in terms of, I agree with you, the reason for the increase, you know, probably had to do with a lot of those downs, you know, the emergencies, right? The small emergencies that people are calling about in their backyard, those sorts of things. Yeah, but I think we can probably get you more detail.
Sure, yeah. And it doesn't have to be, you know, immediate. I'm thinking, I'm just trying to get a sense of like bigger picture, you know, how much related to this crime or homelessness or mental health, whatever may be, how that would be broken down. The last one that doesn't necessarily, it pertains to City Council, but I was thinking about the response, oh, I'm blanking on the woman's name, from the school bond had talked about having interpreters right present to increase accessibility. Part of the thing, part of what I realize, I don't think we currently have an interpreter for City Council meetings, do we? So I'd be interested to see what that process would look like. You know, I feel a bit hypocritical, you know, we're going to be holding other organizations accountable to create accessible processes if we ourselves are not necessarily engaging in that, knowing interpretation is huge for a portion of our community in Newburgh. So that would be something I'd be interested in potentially pursuing, knowing that there's costs, of course, that come with that. But I think it'd be something worth pursuing. Thank you for looking into that question.
All right, other questions for Dan? I'll give it a couple of beats here, so I... Okay, I just have one other, regarding, regarding the use of inmate labor. We did discuss this, so I don't know, six, nine months ago, something like that. Because there was a question as to, is to, you know, like you say, the question of justice, what was the compensation, et cetera. Parks and Rec District has used them very heavily over many years. And what we found, and you all correct me if my recollection is not what it should be, was basically there was a reduction in sentence, time served. And so that was the main compensation for people to get out and work in the community. So again, like I said, and I think Russ Thomas at the time was hoping to begin to use some of the prison labor as well. And so that's why it came to us, so. All right, next, on to, I believe we're next on to public comments. I've got, I think we've got one written, and I will start with that. All right, and here it is. So this was from Jennifer Kelly, submitted on Monday, the 21st. And it says, the question being, or the statement being, "The flag should be at half-mast to honor the late Supreme Court Justice. I was sad to see that was not considered this weekend." And I think Dan probably has a response to that.
Yeah, I mean, logistically, the death was announced, I think, on Friday at about four-ish, maybe, late in the day. Public Works would take care of that. They were, they operate on a 410 right now, and so they are not working on Friday. But what's also interesting, I did ask Russ Thomas about the flag. He indicated that it was lowered this morning to have staff. And he also said that there's a communication channel for lowering the flag, and that apparently the governor and the state will essentially say, "It's time to lower it," and why. And they accidentally sent that notice this morning out on the wrong email. And so it went to an old email distribution list for flag lowering. And so they had to resend it, so there's a bit of a delay across the state in officially getting that recognition. He did indicate there are times when we could supersede and sort of lower the flag, have staff. If we, as a city, chose to do that, typically you get the governor or the president to issue that order. And so we didn't necessarily have the staff on hand, but we also didn't get the order until this morning.
Well, thank you, and hopefully Jennifer is listening in. So Sue, do we have any other general public comments? Or people waiting to make comment?
Mr. Mayor, we do not have any other general public comments, nor do I have anyone waiting.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Issue Tracker, Dan.
There's nothing to add to the Issue Tracker, but I did want to note there were a couple of public comments at our last meeting on the 8th that mentioned traffic and speed. And so just wanted to note downtown and on River Road, we did talk afterwards about increasing enforcement using, you may have seen the sort of speed message boards being put up and just reminding people of the speed limit and also what their current speed is. And I think, you know, those, this is a public service announcement to those who might be listening to City Councils. This is why you should, you know, pay attention to our meetings every time. We will be increasing our enforcement. And so just know maybe to slow down and observe the speed limit, especially in downtown. You heard it here first.
Yes, another plug for these meetings. There we go. All right.
Sorry, real quick, is it possible to have that update also pushed out on our midnight means of communication, whether it's through Facebook or the city, all that?
Of course. Great, yeah, no, and we're trying to obviously use the message boards to encourage people, you know, reflect their actual speed at the time, because I think people tend to hear that 25 miles an hour and forget, you know, or not really understand what that actually means in practice when they're driving down. So, yeah, totally, we will put that information up.
Anything else on public comments? Okay, all right, let's move on. We're on to public hearings. This is item 7A. We've got a series of resolutions here that we will have to vote on individually, but I believe we can go ahead and reopen the public hearing. This was, oh, I think we closed it, it was tabled on April 6th. And so we will now reopen the public hearing for Resolutions 2020-3650, 2020-3660, 2020-3661, and 2020-3662 involving Citizens Rate Review Committee rate recommendations for water, wastewater, stormwater, and the transportation utility fee, also known as TOUGH. So Matt, I think that is your, that is your lead-in.
Mr. Mayor, today?
Chairman, yes.
So, let me, let me get to the spot. On April 6th, the council approved a motion to table this to this date, September 21st, and to reopen the public hearing. That public hearing was closed at the, at the end, prior to the deliberations. So to reopen it really should be done through a motion by the council. And then my recommendation would be particularly since we have a new council member, that you'd essentially start at the beginning of the public hearing process.
Okay, how's about a motion to that effect, people? And I can't see you, so you'll have to speak up. Looking for a motion to reopen the public hearing?
I'm motion to reopen the public hearing?
Right.
Is that right?
Yep, for the, for the resolutions listed, for the...
Yes, that's right.
Yeah.
So this is for Resolution 2023-650, 2023-660, 2023-661, 2023-662.
Thank you. Do we have a second? At least a second. All right, any further discussion? All right, do we need a roll call vote, Sue, or Chairman? No? All right, all in favor signify by raising your left hand. I think I can see everybody that looks unanimous to me, so. All right, so now, let's reopen the public hearing for the said resolutions. All right, and let us begin, so this public hearing is now called to order. Let's, declaration of conflict of interest or abstentions, anyone? Okay, all right, the staff report now, please, Matt.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you for entertaining us this evening with the public hearing. In your packet, I'm just going to briefly go over the executive summary. And as has been already stated, this is a continuation from April 6th, where the council did table it six months. And I will add that the Citizens Rate Review Committee did meet on June 16, 2020, for their annual utility assistance meeting and did, you know, support the decision to delay, support the council's decision to delay the consideration of the change of rates. So this, this public hearing was noticed in the Newburgh Graphic last Wednesday. And tonight, we did anticipate having to kind of re-educate the council, not just because of the delay, but we also stated a new committee member, or new council member. And so Deb Gialardi is with us this evening as well, as is Carn Hoffman. And Deb has a PowerPoint to high-level review the, what was presented at the April 6th meeting. It's not the same packet, but I believe that PowerPoint was included in your, in the packet this evening. So from there, I'll let, I'll turn it over to Deb and allow her to bring us up to speed on what we're considering this evening.
Okay, can you hear me okay? Yeah, okay. So as Matt said, let's go to the next slide, Matt. I will do just a real quick recap of what the recommendations are. You can see in this slide that the percentage increases for the two-year period for which the Citizen Rate Review Committee makes recommendations. These are overall percentage increases in revenue resulting from the rate increases. It's important to remember that the committee looks at the rate structure and does a cost of service analysis to determine what individual rate components and customer class rate changes should be. So not every rate component goes up at the same percentage, but these numbers represent the overall average for each system. For the most part, these, you can see, are uniform increases both years, with the exception of the non potable water rates, which the first year there represents the realignment to the updated cost of service. And then the second year is an inflationary increase. The other system rates continue the longstanding practice of smoothing rates and trying to have uniform increases as best we can to keep, to moderate any rate spikes. So let's, so you can see the actual percentages for each system. And it's important to remember that when you see a percent increase, like a 9% for stormwater, stormwater represents, you'll see when we get to the end of the bill, the smallest component of the rates. And so even though it's the largest percentage increase, it's the smallest component of the bill increase. So we'll talk more about that at the, at the end. But let's go on to the next slide. Talk a little bit about, remember what drives these, the need for these rate increases. The Citizen Rate Review Committee considers the revenue requirements, which are primarily the operation, maintenance, replacement costs, as well as the system investment needs, that that's the capital improvement costs, as well as financial management considerations like debt service, reserves, that are all important in just the financial management of the utilities, like you would for your business or for your home. On the revenue side, we forecast the best we can customer growth, water consumption trends, which are important indicators of revenue for water and sewer systems. And we forecast the revenue under existing rates and determine to meet the different requirements, what do those revenue slopes or average annual rate increases need to be to meet the projected costs? So that's the process and the key drivers. Let's go to the next slide, Matt. One of the primary reason that utility rates have, are nationally increasing about double the rate of inflation is because of capital improvements and the fact that generally capital improvements haven't kept up with the need for system repair, replacement, regulatory requirements and things like that. And you can see here that water and wastewater, the most significant capital improvement needs in the near term between $17 and $20 million. And those are for important things related to system reliability, efficiency, safety, all of those factors. For stormwater, about $4 million related to some capacity issues, safety, flood control. And the TOUGH is really focused on pavement preservation as it was designed to do. Let's go to the next slide, please. So as you consider, you know, it's not easy to raise rates at any, any time. And it's particularly difficult when there are what seems to be continued numerous shocks to the economy and ability to pay. The important, one of the important things to remember is that if generally when rate increases are deferred, they mean higher rate increases later. So that's why the city has had a practice in recent years to have regular smaller percentage increases in order to try to minimize those rate shocks later. There have been really good changes to the rate structure to stabilize one of the shocks to the system, the COVID. Some of the mandated closures and things associated with institutional and commercial customers have led to reductions in water use for those customers. So if the rate structure is too heavily focused on the consumption charge, it puts your revenue stream at risk. And over the years, and included in the recommendations of the Citizen Rate Review Committee, have been to continue to balance that fixed charge revenue relative to the volume charge. These, the recommended rates for the water system include continuing that practice. And as I mentioned, reserves, reserves. Again, this is something that the Citizen Rate Review Committee has looked hard at over the last few cycles. And they take into consideration not only what are the, the near-term actual costs that are projected for the systems, but are you maintaining adequate reserves so that when we see a reduction, as we did in the most recent fiscal year, because of an unforeseen reduction in revenue, because of an unforeseen circumstance like a pandemic, there are reserves that can be dipped into, at least in the short term, from a, like an annual basis? there are reserves that can be dipped into, at least in the short term, from a, like an annual basis. So the process and the recommendations are designed to deliver stable, reliable revenue for these essential services. Next slide, please. So to wrap up, the revenue, overall revenue increases, which you, which I had in the first slide and are on the left-hand two columns here by system. For a typical user with, and you can see what those, the units of consumption for water and wastewater are for that typical user. You can see the current bill, the current monthly bill, and what that bill would increase to as a result of the two years of rate increases. And you can see that the, the total difference, and this includes the public safety and the communication officer charges, which aren't reviewed by the Citizen Rate Review Committee, but are part of the bill. So overall, the increases are around $6 per month, per year, which is for four and a half percent increase in the bill. And that was the, you can go to the next slide or you can leave it here, Matt, but that's, that's the end of the presentation.
There it is, questions? Okay, I can't, I can't see all again, so remember, you'll have to holler. All right. Okay, well, next, seeing no questions at this point anyway. Sue, do you have, I can open public testimony if you have anyone in the queue.
Mr. Mayor, I have not received any written public comment for these items, nor do I have anyone who signed up to speak tonight.
I will therefore close public testimony. And the recommendation from staff, please.
Recommendation from staff is to approve resolutions 2020, 3650, 3660, 3661, 3662.
Thank you. All right, the time for council deliberation and any additional questions of staff. Here you go.
Mayor, I'm going to be voting yes on this. Um, I know it's difficult to raise rates, I know that. But I also was here at the time with Deb, all those years ago, when the council had not raised the water bill at all for over, I think, a decade or maybe longer. And it was shocking and it was hard and it really hurt people because it went from a very small water bill to a very large water bill with no warning. On these, but we were also at a place where our, we weren't bondable anymore. We, so I think the small, constant, small upward movement is much easier for people to handle. And I think it is the responsible thing to do with our infrastructure and to, for citizens. I'm done.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
This is definitely a difficult one for me because I, I don't think we can kick the can down the road. You know, we, we saw the school district present to us a bond because they've got buildings that are unsafe because, you know, we can't pay for those things. And I hate to do that at the city by, you know, kicking it down and, and making it the next person's problem to raise rates even more than we're seeing right now. We also know that our money buys us more today than it will a year from now or a couple of years from now. But that's also, you know, the, the other side of the coin is that, you know, I think it is incumbent on us to be as conservative as possible in times where people are really struggling and that we're seeing that people can't pay their bills for, for things that are beyond their control. And so it's definitely difficult. I do intend to vote yes for this because I do, I, I am concerned about what our legacy is. If we are not collecting the funds, we need to make sure we're maintaining things and, and making sure things are safe and, and reasonable. But I, it's tough because I do know that people are having a tough time with this.
All right, anyone else? Elise?
Yeah, I, I would echo what Denise and Stephanie both said. I just think it's ironic that tonight we're paying for the, paying for the, the history of some, I guess, infrastructure kicks down the road. So, and during a pandemic. So I think that this is just a note to myself to make the hard decisions as we're going forward and as we will need to in the future. Because this is one of many decisions we're going to need to make as a city council in the near future around long-term planning for our infrastructure. So yeah, I will be voting yes.
Anyone else? Okay.
Yeah.
I gave it a beat.
That's good. I was waiting for Jules, I feel like Jules is about to jump in there. Yeah, a lot of my colleagues echo sentiment. Couple thoughts and questions. One, I think this is, what page, at least on mine of the PDF, it's page 24 of 80. It's a graph outlining where we are relative to not only the maximum, but the average. I often realize, again, it sounds like we're way above average because we need to begin to build infrastructure. And so I would be curious to hear how we might be able to get back closer to the average. I don't know if that's Deb, a question for you or who might be able to answer that. Because I'm, again, I'm with my, my colleagues, I think we need to make the hard decisions now. I'm just looking towards the future to consider what, what, what we might be able to do to get us back down closer to, to the average.
I can try to answer. So, and I don't have the, the chart that you're looking at, but I, I think it's probably one that the Citizen Rate Review Committee looked at that showed that's the bill comparison of all of the utilities combined. The, there's so many factors that go into rate comparisons. One of the big ones in our area is whether it's a regional system or an individual city system. Most of the utilities on the comparison that you're, I think that you're looking at are regional utilities. And so there's benefits of economies of scale. And so there are just nature of the agency and the organization that will drive, always make, you know, relative differences. Nothing that you can do about that. You can be operating as efficiently as you possibly could. And the fact that somebody just have a, has a larger, you know, system that they can spread those costs over is, you know, a lot of the costs, the majority of the costs of a system are fixed. And the more you can sort of, you know, spread them out over more users to help bring the average cost down. It does, you know, that's a benefit. The other thing is that there are, you have for wastewater, for example, recently gone through a major expansion and some upgrades. And so your rate increases, believe it or not, are relatively low in this next near term where others are higher. And so at some point, it may not be that you sort of do anything different. It's that others catch up with you, right? But again, it's, it's dependent on the costs and customers of those other agencies and some of the, you know, where they get their water from or where they're discharging their sewer and, you know, what permit requirements they're subject to is, there's just so many differences. But I will say, just because I work with a lot of the agencies in the region and across the state, that I know others are facing more significant increases than the city is. And I do expect that over time, it's going to take some time that you'll, you know, be further down, more towards the middle. But the regional nature of some of these systems, I think, is always going to make them a little less expensive per unit.
That makes sense. If I understood the presentation correctly, the, the first two, two bars had to do with wastewater and sewage. And it sounded like a lot of it was built around the costs connected to infrastructure. So is that one of the things that, once it's built, would allow us to get back down more towards the average or like you said, others that are having to build infrastructure would increase? So it would begin to, to level out? Is that your understanding as well?
Yeah, so, you know, another thing is just in terms of how things are financed or not. And one of the big decisions, as was mentioned, you know, years ago, when the city hadn't been raising rates consistently and it got into some issues with debt and not being able to issue more debt because you weren't meeting your current debt requirement.
Yeah.
That, you know, went to a cash funding. Over time, that's going to save you money. In the short term, it means you've got to raise your rates to cover the, but, but as you said, once those things are built and you're not incurring that additional interest costs, that's a good thing. So, yeah, all those are factors.
Just to add to that, Bryce, if you, if you don't mind. We've been doing rate comparisons for years. And this cycle, we actually took a little bit different approach and are working further towards that. Meaning you can look at the price of a commodity, but, but it does not indicate the quality of the commodity or the timing or the age or any of that effect. So to the point that Deb was discussing, you know, we're trying to look at other, other measurable units to find out, okay, is it fair to compare us to another entity? You know, it doesn't tell the whole story just to look at the price of a unit. And there's geography that goes into it, there's regionalization that goes into it, there's the age of the assets. So one of the things we did, we at least worked towards and, and did not get as far as we hoped in the committee process, but just looking at financial status of other, of other entities, which you can imagine just getting rate information from all these entities is a, is a task in and of itself. But comparing financially where these, these entities are, you know, it'd be like comparing a, you know, a Microsoft to a Springbook software. You know, you just can't look at the sticker stock and go, oh, we're in a bad place or a good place. We might have the lowest rates in town, but we might have the worst water in the world or the, you know, the, you know, the oldest assets as well. So that's, I think, the situation where historically, you know, Council Bacon and Deb have had the insight. And there, there have been those double-digit increases in the early parts of the 2000s. So it was just a way, I mean, we totally recognize that if you look at the, the price alone, you know, you can go, oh, my gosh, we're, you know, this or that. But, you know, there's a lot more factors. We tried to take further steps to make that a more meaningful comparison beyond just the price. And I think we will take that forward as we, you know, as we advance the CRC process. We have another consultant on board. In fact, the gentleman that Cividata that did this, we've been working with them on doing comparisons of those, of those financial systems, of those entities. So a lot more work, but more meaningful perhaps.
Yeah, no, thank you for elaborating that. And I mean, obviously, you know, water is life. So we're wanting to responsibly steward that, that resource. So thank you. And I think I saw, you know, pricing around solar and supporting waters to what degree that would potentially help offset some of the costs in terms of energy consumption. But, um, yeah, thank you for answering my questions.
There are questions?
I just have one more comment. I think just to really empathize, growing up in a low-income household here in Newburgh, like, it's really tough to see the increases. But also, like, I remember my father telling me stories of like how low it was at one point and how it went up double digits and just him having to figure out how to budget for that. So I think that the, you know, having smaller increases instead of one flat-out straight later down the line can really help folks at least budget a little bit. I know that's a really hard, tough conversation to be having right now. But, you know, my dad always talks about those moments where they just, the rates went up. And so if we can hopefully help folks a little bit just to think about the future a little bit, that way, I think that that's really a good step. And so thank you, Denise, for, you know, that insight and knowledge you bring here.
All right, other comments, folks? All right, I've, I've got a question or two, I think. I, I was trying to tie this, Matt, back to the budget. And well, for full disclosure, folks, I, I did a couple of tours on the Citizens Rate Review Committee. So it's great to see Deb again. So I was trying to tie this sort of to the budget a little bit in that, and I tried to look at user fees in relation to the percentages. So the first question is, and this comes back to what Dan said about the structural thing. You know, we tend to get the Citizens Rate Review stuff, maybe in April. Maybe the budget is already in place. But in this case, we had, you know, budgeted increases of like 2.5% for wastewater user fees and down throughout. So I'm just trying to figure out how that correlates and how we can maybe in the future better align that so that we have, either we have the rates approved before we build the budget or something like that. So that's, that's one comment. And then the question with that is, do you know how much revenue? This is, these, all of these are supposed to generate roughly? Or, and if you don't have it right there, I'll throw out a number and see if this sounds right. Again, this is just looking at the budget comparison. It's about $373,000 for the, for the year. Does that sound remotely right?
So we have the numbers, Mayor, on the, in depth, I believe you. In fact, I think the report includes it. And I'll let somebody pull it up while we're doing this. But let me, let me answer the first question about the budget. You know, the budget did not include any increase in January of 2021. We, we do bring, the cycle is designed every two years to bring the rates before the council. And the, the committee generally meets between September and February of every, like, odd, odd year, 2019, 2020 in this case. And so with that design to present these to council by early April, so that as we touch up the budget, which is generally finalized by mid-April, we have exactly what we need. So because the council met on April 6th and we, it was, you know, decided to postpone, we made the decision in the budget process to not reflect any increase at all, which makes, it's always easier to add than to subtract. And so it was, you know, more transparent. So any, any of the, you know, budgetary changes year over year are updates, both in rates and consumption and actual true-up of, you know, assumptions made in the past. So what we would do if these, if these resolutions were approved this evening, we would be increasing our budget to reflect the additional revenue. And I believe Deb and I talked this morning about the financial impact on that. And I think that we can probably answer that question for you this evening, Lee.
That'd be great. Okay, I guess, the, oh, the other question is in this, in any of this, did we, I know you just distributed utility assistance money. Did, was that increased at all? The, the amount that was distributed?
Yes, the, primarily, the, the budget is annually approved $20,000 for that utility assistance program. And the budget process included that $20,000. However, when the city ran the Support Local Challenge, we built in a mechanism where folks could contribute their credit, their, their utility credit to a donation fund, if you will. And we had about $17,000 that was added to that. When the committee, when the Citizens Rate Review Committee met in June, they deliberated for two hours on the usage of that and how we, you know, allocate that out. And so they did make a decision to increase that program, you know, directly by 2,100. And so they did make a decision to increase that program, you know, directly by 2,100 directly for veterans assistance. So that allowed us to, you know, issue more for veterans directly. And then the rest would be allocated out as we, as the need went forward, meaning as, as the various entities that distribute these credits, the utility assistance ran out of money that we would continue to fund that, you know, backfill that. So yes, we are anticipating utilizing the utility assistance program to an even greater extent this year.
Just, yeah, the 2,100 in perspective, I mean, if it, if your average bill is $150 a month, that's not a lot, 150s in $2,100. So Deb, one, one other question. All right, we postponed this once because of COVID. Are you seeing other communities, have other communities paused at all in their, in their cycle, waiting to see what happens?
Uh, no. You know, I've got a number of, of, fall seems, a lot of people don't like to raise rates during summer because that's peak water use time. And so usually it's more of a fall, kind of a time period, fall to, to winter. So there, you know, Salem's going to consider similar rate increases here shortly. And there's, I don't know of anybody that's deferred increases because of the reasons we've mentioned. Again, they're, they're hard decisions to make. And, but the pandemic is also having an impact on revenues. And so, meaning the, the utility revenues are down on, for the water system because water consumption is down. And so that's a, you know, going to exacerbate the problem if a rate increase is deferred. You know, hopefully, at some point soon, that consumption will come back up. But that's lost revenue that wasn't anticipated. So, yeah, I think everybody's in a similar kind of boat.
Yeah, because there's the other side of that, yes, the, the consumption is down, but that's also because businesses are suffering. And so the optic sometimes of increasing rates while people are suffering is, yeah. But I guess it, it also just comes back to, I mean, if, if, and, and again, this is purely optics. But if we have a, an increase in the general fund, unanticipated increase of $566,000, right? And we're looking on putting on rate increases to our users of something less than that. And again, I understand they're not the same animal. I get all of that. But again, it's, it is, for me, it's, it's a question of $599 or $5.99 per family per month for a year when they don't maybe know where the paycheck's coming from. So again, I think it's more optics than anything. And as I've said before, we also did not pass along a cost of living increase to our own employees this year. But for any of them that live in town, we're going to ask them to pay four more percent on their utility bills. So again, it's, it's more optics probably than anything else because I absolutely agree. You know, having sat through these meetings for quite a number of years, that we cannot continue to push it away. But again, I think we have to be somewhat sensitive to the environment around us. So there it is.
Follow-up question, and this is probably around budget later. Do we have the option of increasing the utilities assistance fund? I'm assuming we do.
Yeah, that's a budgetary part of the process.
Okay, okay. You know, that'd be something that we like to make special note of. Just remember, I mean, I'm sure there'll be lots of things that we address. But I think, you know, this conversation's been really enlightening. And I feel like that might be how we address some of the concerns you have, Rick. So we can, you know, be conscious of those for whom that extra $5.99 a month is significant, while also doing what we need to do in the present, so as not to put folks in jeopardy in the future.
One of the aspects, to Counselor Cofield's comments, one of the aspects of the, of increasing the utility assistance program has been getting it to be fully maximized, fully utilized. And it has not been, it's, it's, we've worked to get the word out, the messaging out, slowly get the utilization up. But it has not even tapped $20,000 historically. So that's something we've been talking about with the Citizens Rate Review Committee, working to get further word out. And, you know, I'm, I'm more comfortable, you know, I'm totally comfortable increasing it. But we're also seeing that the utilization and the word needs to be out too, so.
With you. Got to use it. Get the money to the people.
Yeah, well, this is, you know, again, this is the, you know, it's part of the structure to how it's currently done. I mean, I, as I recall, unless it has changed, it goes through the churches generally, how are the ones that distribute it, except for the veterans program. So as far as I know, you know, to, you can, there's not a mechanism that's particularly agile for people who are just having a tough time to come in and do it. There has to be, there's an intermediary largely, I think.
Yeah, there is a portion that's, you know, we can directly affect here out of the finance office. And so there, you know, we do get an annual process of applications for that. So, but there, so there is a little bit to, you know, effort to, and ability to pivot, if you will. But we also are trying to strengthen the, the network of the nonprofits that, that utilize that program. So there's about 11 churches and as well as YCAP that are part of that program. And so, and, and some new churches even this, this year as well, so.
All right, other comments, folks? Questions? All right, let's go ahead then. We'll move on to, we've got to do each one individually. So if we would like to start with the first on the list and, and go from there. If someone would like to make a resolution.
I move we adopt resolution number 20203650.
Second.
And that was Denise with a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by raising your left hand. Opposed, right hand. All right, so resolution 20203650 passes.
Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, you voted no.
I did. Okay. All right, the next one. Would someone like to make a motion?
Okay, I'll go. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt resolution 20203660.
I don't know who got it. I will say Jules. All right, further discussion. All in favor, signify by raising your left hand. Opposed, right hand. This is going to get repetitive, I'm seeing. All right, next one.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, I'd like to make a motion to adopt 20203661.
Second.
Elise with a second. All right, all in favor, signify by raising your left hand. Opposed, right hand. All right, and the last one.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt resolution 20203662.
Second, anyone?
Second.
Stephanie with a second. All right, all in favor, signify by raising your left hand. Opposed, right hand. All right, so there we are. Thank you. And thank you very much to Deb, Matt. And please thank the committee for all of us, for all of their, all of their hard work. And, and thank you again, right? Thank you. Thank you very much. Have a nice evening. Feel free to stick around, Deb. We're going to, we're going to talk about annexations next, so there you go. All right, your letter. Thank you. All right. All right, now we are moving into one of these rare animals that we have only on occasion. So this is a quasi-judicial land use public hearing. All right, and this is, where did it go? Ordinance 20202866, an ordinance approving the annexation of property located at 2255 Northeast Shalem Drive. And Keith, is this you on this one?
That is correct.
All right, so let me, let me open the public hearing. And as mentioned, I did mention the, the purpose. Testimony, we will, if there is any public testimony, we'll limit it to five minutes per person. And I have to remember that there are legal announcements during this. And we need to make sure, if so desired, to waive or the second reading and read by title only. So let's all remember all of these things, and I will do my best to do the same. So, all right, Keith, let me call for abstentions, bias, ex parte contact and objections to jurisdiction, anyone? All right, I do not hear any. With that, the staff report, Keith. Good evening.
Speed one thing, Mayor.
Darn, darn. Yes.
The quasi-judicial announcements.
Oh, yes.
Certain announcements are required before the commencement of a quasi-judicial land use hearing. This hearing deals with the land use decision of an annexation of property at 2255 Northeast Shalem Drive. The announcement required by the Oregon Revised Statutes, ORS 197.763, is as follows. The applicable substantive criteria for the decision are listed in the staff report, Exhibit C to the ordinance, which begins on page 11 on the electronic version of the packet of this item. Testimony, arguments and evidence must be directed towards the criteria described above or other criteria in the plan or land use regulation that you believe applies to this decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. The applicant who has a burden of proof may have at least seven days after the record is closed to submit final written argument. At the close of the testimony portion of the hearing, the applicant will have to decide if the applicant wishes to submit further written argument. The ORS 197763 definitions, argument means assertions and analysis regarding the satisfaction or violation of legal standards or policy believed relevant by the proponent to a decision. Argument does not include facts. Evidence means facts, documents, data or other information offered to demonstrate compliance or non-compliance, with the standards believed by the proponent to be relevant to the decision. If the applicant wishes to make a submission, no further deliberation shall place, take place tonight. If the applicant waves it outright, the council may proceed with deliberation. And that ends the initial quasi-judicial announcement.
All right, thank you, Chairman. I will strive to do better in the future. All right, the staff report now, Keith, I believe.
Thank you. My name's Keith Leonard. I'm an associate planner here with the city of Newburgh. And tonight I'll present ANX 20-001. This is the annexation of property located at 2255 Northeast Shalem Drive. And this is because of a health hazard annexation. I'd like to introduce the RCA and all the attachments and exhibits into the public record. Next slide, please. Little bit of background. So the property is about a, about an acre long, or acre long, an acre in area. The, the criteria in which they're going to ask for this annexation is located in section 15.250.060, and this is health hazard annexation. Property is located at 2255 Northeast Shalem Drive and it's tax lot 400. The first number there is, is tax map for Yamhill County. So the property is within the UGB or the urban growth boundary. Comprehensive plan designation for this property is LDR or Low Density Residential. The current zoning is Yamhill County VLDR-1, and it's very low residential. The equivalent zoning within the city to the LDR comprehensive plan and, and their low-density designation is the R1 here in the city of Newburgh. And that requires a minimum of 5,000 square feet of property for a lot. The criteria in which we look at is section 15.250.020 and 15.250.030. And this is, these are the criteria in which we, we see if it's a good idea to annex this property. And next slide, please. So here's a big blown-up picture of the city. The big, long, red arrow is where this property is located. There's a gold line just to the west of the property, and that's, that's our urban growth boundary there. The blue line is the city limits. Next slide, please. So criteria from dot 020, the conditions for annexation. The site must be within the urban growth boundary. This is within the urban growth, growth boundary. It is contiguous to the existing city limits. Just across the street, you do have the city limits. So the legal description of the area to be annexed will also include right-of-way that will be annexed in the city. We won't require that they do these immediate improvements. But as property comes into the city, at some point, they may change that road cross-section to something that would be appropriate for, for city streets. Next slide, please. Here's property again, outlined in gold. Just across the street to the east, you see the, kind of the higher density area. And that is the city of Newburgh, right there. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, the comprehensive plan designation is LDR. You also see that there is additional properties further to the west. But this is immediately abutting Northeast Shalem Drive and the city is right across the street. Next slide, please. Here's an aerial photo. It also shows the utilities. So we do have water and stormwater facilities red in Northeast Shalem Drive. And wastewater is a little bit further over. That's that green line, line in North Legacy Drive. So that's, that's a little bit further away. Next slide. Section dot 030 quasi-judicial annexation. The proposed use complies with the comprehensive plan and designation on the comprehensive plan map. They are requesting that it would go to the R1 zoning, and that is equivalent to our LDR comprehensive plan designation. Next slide, please. Adequate level of urban services available within three years. So public water and stormwater lines are located in Northeast Shalem Drive. The wastewater is a little bit further away and at North Legacy Drive. If the property were to develop in the future, then all utilities would have to be extended to serve future development. That's not the intent of this annexation. This annexation is to get some potable water to a resident that's, doesn't have potable water, enough potable water coming out of their, their groundwater well. So they will be extending the water immediately. If there is subdivision or that sort of thing later on that is developed in this property, then you'd have to have road improvements and that sort of thing. But we do have that right-of-way. And then police, fire, parks and schools are available to serve the, any future development of property as well. Next slide, please. So the planning commission, on August 13th, 2020, they made a recommendation to the city council in the form of resolution 2020-357. And this recommends the annexation of one-acre property located at 2255 Northeast Shalem Drive in Yamhill County tax map R3218BA and tax lot 00400. Next slide, please. I'd like to make a correction on the slide. I left out 16. So the preliminary recommendation by the staff is to move to adopt City Council Ordinance Number 2020-2866, which approves the requested annexation of one-acre property located at 2255 Northeast Shalem Drive. And that again is tax lot 400. That concludes my presentation. Mr. Steenstraw, I did see him. That concludes my presentation. Uh, Mr. Steenstraw, I did see him in the audience. Um, he is the property owner and the applicant here. So if you have questions for the applicant, they are, are present. That concludes my presentation.
All right, thank you, Keith. Um, any questions for Keith before we move into public comments? Okay, hearing done. All right, let's now open public testimony. Um, I will set time limits at five minutes. Do we have anyone ready to speak, Sue?
Mr. Mayor, I have no one signed up to speak and I have not received any written testimony on this item.
Okay. All right, and I assume that that means public agency letter or comments as well? We did not receive anything? Okay, thank you. All right, in that case, I will close public testimony on this portion of the hearing. City attorney's legal announcements now, please.
If the decision is not made tonight and continued to another date, the record could be reopened at that later date by motion of the council. Therefore, do not assume no further evidence will be taken. If the decision is made tonight, the council has the authority to reconsider the decision following proper procedure. This motion to reconsider is usually required to be made at the next meeting of the city council. The fact that the council could reconsider their decision does not affect the length of time for appeal of that decision. And that's the end of the, uh, announcements. And I just remind the council, as stated in the initial amount announcements, uh, the applicant has the ability under, um, statute to supplement the record or, uh, provide final written argument. So if, um, if, uh, we're going to go forward, we would need to unmute the applicant and, and have them on the record waive that, uh, legal right.
Mr. Steenstraw should be on now.
Good evening, Mr. Steenstraw. It looks like you are muted at the moment. There we go. Good evening. So the, the question for you, Mr. Steenstraw, as the applicant, is whether you would be willing to waive the second reading of this, of this ordinance so that, uh, we can move forward this evening? Or if not, we will, we'll come back to it.
No, I would waive it so you guys can go forward with it this evening.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, moving, uh, right along then. Um, final comments from staff and again, your recommendation, Keith?
Sure. So, uh, staff recommendation is, uh, council move to adopt, uh, city council ordinance number 20202866, which approves the requested annexation of one acre property located at 2255 Northeast Shalem Drive, Yamhill County tax map, R3218BA, tax lot 00400. And that is my recommendation or staff's recommendation.
Okay, um, all right, time for deliberation, council.
Mayor.
Comments? Denise?
Oh, I was going to make a motion to waive the second reading.
Yes, please do. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Thank you. There's Stephanie with a second. All right, um, all in favor of waiving the second reading signify by raising your left hand. And that looks like everybody. There we go. All right, any further discussion? All right, I will, uh, entertain a motion if we are at that point in the evening and, uh, read by title only.
Okay, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 20202866 approving the health hazard annexation due to a lack of potable water for the property located at 2255 Northeast Shalem Drive, Yamhill County tax lot number R3218BA dash 00400, and read by title only.
Nicely done. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Jules. All right, um, do we need a, do we need a, just a voice vote? Is that all right, or do you need a?
Roll call.
Roll call vote? Okay.
I'll read the title and then, yeah, you'll need to do a roll call, load in an ordinance. And ordinances require, uh, a majority of the full council, not just the majority of those present, so. Are you ready?
Yep.
Ordinance number 2020 dash 2866, an ordinance approving the annexation of one acre of property plus the area of the adjacent rights of way into the city of Newburgh and, and change the zoning from Yamhill County VLDR1 to Newburgh R1 low density residential for property located at 2255 Northeast Shalem Drive, tax lot R3218B like boy, A like Adam, dash 00400.
And, uh, we have a mo- a motion, a second. We've heard the legal. Time for the vote, Sue.
Councillor Cofield?
Uh, proof, yes.
Councillor Yornell Holloman?
Yes.
Councillor Martinez Plancarte?
Yes.
Mayor Rogers?
Yes.
Councillor Bacon?
Yes.
Councillor Finley?
Yes.
Mayor Six Zero?
All right, thank you so much. All right, Mr. Steenstraw, hope that means you get some potable water here soon. The sooner the better. So, all righty, well, thank you. Thanks very much, of course. All right, council committee reports. Do we have anything that you'd like to report out, folks? Anybody? Uh, well, I'll, I'll throw this out there. There we go, there we go, Elise.
I'm not going to turn on my camera for a second. Um, but in the spirit of, uh, affordable housing, I just want to give a huge shout out, kudos to North Valley friends who have two amazing, and I got to actually tour them today, um, tiny homes. And, um, a local organization is going to be case managing those, um, homes, which I'm super excited about. And I just feel like we're actually doing it now. We're on the right track. And I think that it's going to spur on some other really exciting projects, um, that Rick and I are involved in. So really excited about that. And then the other thing, I'll let Rick expand on it, but I just wanted to say that it was a privilege to really attend the community court, um, conversation on Friday. Was it Friday? Yeah, on Friday, um, with different organizational partners. Um, and just really impressed with Judge Blake, um, and his, you know, he's really spearheading this effort. Um, we have, um, support from our, um, our police department. And, um, just, it's a really, the right way to do it. And, um, hoping that it's a step in the right direction with the, uh, with every, all the, um, tension in our country right now around mental health and, um, everything going on. So, um, really excited to be a part of that. And I don't know if Rick wants to say anything more.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, it was cool. I mean, we got, we started a meeting on Friday. We had a whole bunch of service providers, um, you know, local and then throughout the county. Um, and it was great. People were, you know, really interested. And basically the idea, as I think we mentioned it before, is to try to divert people that, um, have other needs, whether it's mental health, alcohol, uh, drug addiction, whatever it is, out of the criminal court system and get them the services that they need. That's basically it, which again, makes sense. It takes, uh, some of that work off the police department, which is certainly good. And it gets it to, uh, to folks that are, that are really experienced at that line of work. Um, I think I'm going to go down Wednesday, Elise, I didn't mention this, but I think I'm going to go down and watch the, the inaugural session in Sweet Home on Wednesday. I'm going to go down and, and check it out and see Judge Blake in action down, down there. So, anyway, yeah. Anything else? Sorry, sorry about that. All right.
You will never, you will never regret a day spent in Judge Blake's courtroom if you're not in front of him.
Yep, um, anybody else? Anything, anything else? All right, is that close to the end of the agenda? Oh, LOC annual conference. I almost forgot, Sue. There it is. That's coming up, folks. It's virtual. You can sign up. Talk to Sue. She'll sign you up. It's a good thing. Okay. Anything else? All right. By my watch, I got 8:46. Not bad. We can do better, but we did well. Anyway, thank you all. Uh, thank you for all the good work you do. Thank you for all the questions you ask, uh, you too, Bryce, all the questions you ask and everybody else. Uh, thank you. And again, have a, have a great week, um, and do good things. We'll see you.
Good luck to all the parents that are starting distance learning.
Ooh, yeah, yeah, no kidding, no kidding. Yep, and again, another thank you again, of course, to the first responders, firefighters, the police department, Public Works for all they did with this, this craziness. And I just got to say, watch out for falling sharks from the sky, because that's probably next, so be careful.
I wouldn't take that, right? And dispatch, yes.
Yeah.
And dispatch, of course, of course. Yes, so, all right, otherwise, be well. We'll see y'all later. Take care.